All right, so we're just gonna go ahead and get started with who's here. This meeting is recorded so others can join or watch the recording later. So today is March 24th and this is a finance subcommittee of the city council. And it is 4:50 and we are going to get started with the meeting. I first wanna welcome my colleagues that are on the call, councillor Allen, who is on the finance. Subcommittee councillor Fenton. One councillor Hurst. Let me see, is there any other councillors that I see? If there's any councillors that I'm missing, can you please state your name? All right, no other councillors, I see that they're Mr Pignelli and Mr O'Brien are here. Is there anyone else from your team that's here today?
Madam Chairperson, Michael Crowley, who is part of the Opel real estate team with Peter Pignelli is in attendance.
Thank you. I see a lot of union people here, so welcome, glad that you could join and hear the information. And other folks from the community that I see are here that also wants to hear what is happening with the 31, 1331 Elm Street project. So first I want to welcome all of you and thank you for joining us today. I'm just gonna go ahead and give a quick synopsis of what is being asked. Tim Sheehan.
Lockout vehicle on shoulder ahead.
No, Lisa, let me mute you real quick. Tim Sheehan from the Economic Development Office is here as well. Thank you, Tim, for joining us. So a few weeks back on the city council agenda appeared an item that the city council never discussed or had information on about transferring $6.5 million of free cash to the 1331 Elm Street project. Since then, we had some conversations with mostly Mr Michael O'Brien about the project and why the money is needed. And based on the information that he stated is that because of COVID, material costs have increased and they need an additional 16 million to keep the project going, which I do know that material costs have increased, that is the truth. And I don't think that they're telling any stories about needing the 13 million. There are some things that came out that are not true on what was presented and I will present those in a minute. However, they came to us for the 6.5 million, meaning us, meaning the city council, to approve that from free cash. I want to, so free cash is funds that are not used the prior year. And their free cash that could be used on different projects in the city of Springfield. And I just wanted to let the public know that I requested free cash of $5 million to reduce the property tax burden on the residents of the city of Springfield. And I, it was shot down, there was no negotiation, there was no wiggle room, there was nothing to help the residents of the city of Springfield reduce their property tax burden, although city councillors were getting a lot of calls about that. And so when the 6.5 million came up for the project, while I don't have a problem with union workers going back to work and working, I wanted to know what we can do for the residents of the city of Springfield. In addition to this, it wasn't shoot this down and give it to the residents. In addition, I brought up solutions like can we cover, because we have 21 million of free cash left, so even if we approve the 6.5 million, we'll have about 16 million of free cash left. And I ask, can we waive the trash fee? Is there anything we could do for the residents of the city of Springfield, who's in fact, this money belongs to? It's taxpayer dollars and it should go back to helping residents as well as doing great developments like the 31 Elm Street project. And so I just wanted to give you guys a tidbit on why we keep having these meetings and why we keep discussing this. I just want some relief for the taxpayers in the city of Springfield during this pandemic. We are all struggling. Yes, material prices have increased, but if you look at the statistics, the wealthy, their income or their revenue has increased about 35% while we had 3 million of, you know, low income to moderate workers, unemployed, having food insecurities. Just a lot of factors that were happening in average folks' households. And I know a lot of the union workers can also agree with this because you probably went through a lot of the same struggle by not being able to work during this time. And so I, I wanted to get to the bottom of it. I wanted to see if there was any type of, anything we could do for the residents of the city of Springfield. And then I also have a couple of questions for Tim Sheehan and Michael O'Brien and whoever else on the team wants to speak. So is there anything that, Michael, you wanted to say prior to me asking the questions that I have?
No, madam chairperson, we're, we're, we're good.
Okay, how about you, Tim? Is there anything you wanted to say prior to this?
No, I am all set, set, thank you councillor.
Mr Pignelli, I wanted to give you the same courtesy.
Madam Chairperson, I'm fine, I'm here to listen in and answer any questions you have. Other than, you know, I do want to mention that this is such an important project for the city. And you know, we are really on the one yard line of a once in a lifetime opportunity to rebuild this gem in our city. We don't want to lose that opportunity, something we've been working on for 30 years now. And yeah, I mean, and I want to make it very clear to you and everyone, we're getting zero, zero development fee, 30 years of effort is all sweat equity into this project. It's important.
30 years and the building is deteriorating, so you're, you're not getting any development fees, sir, but will you be getting the more rents that's being collected on the, on the property? For the 70, what, 79 units?
Through you, or to you, madam chairperson, that is all that will be ultimately involved for our work in 1331 Elm would be what I'll call after expenses on an annual basis would be cash flow from that on an annual basis of the operation of the property. And I say fully stabilized, that means all of the apartments rented in the retail are full. Those dollars, 25% of which would be given to mass housing as part of our agreement with mass housing, the balance of which would be the development partners that would have availability of those annual dollars.
Can you tell us what the market rate rent would be on the 50 and then what on the 59 and then what the rent would be on the 20 workforce unit?
Madam Chairperson, I'm gonna present a range, it might be slightly dated. The market rate rent of a one bedroom will be approximately 17 to 1800. And then on the workforce unit, you can expect a discount on that rent somewhere between, market rent somewhere between 150 and $200, so you know, from 1500 to 1600 for a workforce unit.
And is this primarily one bedroom apartments?
It is, and it is that, madam chairperson, because of the existing historic 1331 Elm, it's a, by its configuration and by the historic standards, we must meet that most of the units are one bedrooms.
Thank you.
A basis to find a vulnerable basis of qualification.
Okay, thank you. So will there be any two bedrooms or three bedrooms? Or will, I know primarily it'd be one bedroom, but will there be any other type of units?
To you, madam chairperson, there will be two bedrooms or mainly corner units based on the architecture. It is somewhere between, and I apologize, I don't have the exact number, somewhere between six and 10.
Six and 10, and what, what would the market rate rent be for those?
Again, from memory, it would be approximately 1900 to 2000.
1900 to 2000, so on an average about 1800 for 79 units?
I, I think. Yeah.
Two thousand dollars.
Most of, most of the units being one bedroom, I don't think it would average out. That way I'd say it would lean more towards the 1800.
Yeah, I said 1800.
Yeah.
Yeah, so over the course of a year, that's about 1.7 million dollars in the course of a year that you would average in payments that none of this funding is really going to you. You have to pay back mass housing. And so I just averaged 79 times 1800 and then multiplied that by, by 12. So anyone can do this math and so it's 1.7 million a year. Just a question.
If I could, madam chairperson, we have to run a entire residential building and a retail space. And I would say approximately of your quoted number, the better part of 85% of that is going to go toward building expense, reserve and other factors in order to run, incredibly run and manage a building of this size and complexity as well as a historic building. The balance that will remain after sharing 25% with mass housing will likely be around $200,000 annually. That would be the bottom result of what would go to the partners. Again, in the world of transparency, I'm just being completely upfront. And if you think about it in this terms, we've been involved for 10 years, Wind Company, so Pignelli, Peter Pignelli and Opel have been involved for 30 years. We have pre-development costs that are completely unreimbursed, which is not typical for another combined partnership, but it's about 1.5 million dollars. We're not gonna get reimbursed for at closing on this. In addition to that, we have, as Peter Pignelli mentioned, no developer fee, which again is typical in any development, something that would cover our overhead and profit for all this work and all this labor. Put those two numbers together, it's approximately 5 million dollars that we have not been able to participate in because the numbers won't allow it. And so that 200,000 dollars a year that we would make after all expenses for the building, that would be the kind of revenues versus expenditures that will remain. If you want to do that math, it's, it's, it would be about 22 years before we would get back what we should rightfully get in a project of this size and magnitude when we finance close. So I don't try to, I'm not trying to be comp, complexer, but just to boil down the numbers, that's, that's what it worked out to be, about 200,000 dollars a year. And we'll get paid back for what we've put into the project sometime around 2043, something like that.
Well, let me ask you this, Mr O'Brien, so for the storefront properties, you're not charging any rent? That's just some free service down there because we, we are only talking about rent here for the unit? So there will be no one paying rent for the storefront piece is what you're saying?
Madam Chairperson, I would say this, there'll be a nominal rent paid. We're gonna have to work hard to get those retail spaces full. Springfield is continuing to redevelop, it's got energy and momentum, but you've got a vacancy of storefront and downtown that is probably 50%. And so the market is what we have to work with. And in order to meet the market, we can only charge for rent what the Springfield market would allow. So for that reason, we'll probably be at four to seven dollars a square foot for that space of retail. And, and that's just what the market would bear. Because someone in a partnership is gonna have to assist to fit out that space to make it so that it is whatever the final product would be. And that's gonna be considerably expensive in the millions of dollars to fit it out. So you've got to only charge what would entice someone to pick our place versus some other location. It has to be within the Springfield marketplace based on the vacancy rate and what's available. And, and that would certainly go to, you know, what would be end of year, some additional dollars to the bottom line, but it would be nominal. It really is about making the space full, making the building active and contributing to downtown and making it exciting.
All right, so let's talk about, madam chairperson, can I, can I expound on that, please?
Sure.
Okay. My family's been trying to renovate this building for 30 years now. If you or anyone on the council or anybody listening in thinks we're doing this to make money, that's simply not the case. This is a legacy project that in my head is 100% philanthropy to rebuild a gem in our city. What, I'm not making any money doing it. I have spent thousands of hours to try to renovate this building because I believe it's critical to the success, future success of downtown Springfield. I think it's crazy, insane to have this building abandoned in our core for 30 years. I'm not doing this as a developer to make money. I'm doing this as an effort to help our city, the city I grew up in, the city I love, the city my business is in, the city my family lives in. And that's the only reason I'm doing it. 100% of the risk here, if we don't fill up the building, is on us. So not only are we unlikely to make our money back in 22 years, we may never make it back. In fact, we could lose money on this if the apartments aren't all rent, are, are not all rented. And if the retail space isn't, then we're looking at a loss that's 100% on us.
Okay, so I understand that. Right now, I'm not, I'm not judging your character, I'm trying to figure out what's the best route? Because if you're invested in this legacy, legacy process, I want to know how much money, not sweat equity, because you said you're invested, you're invested with your time. Your, your father was invested in it and I know that that's true because I did my research and I did look and see that your father wanted to create some type of boutique or something before it was a little bit different, a hotel or something. It was a little bit different than it is now. But how much money have you guys put toward this legacy? I'm not talking about your time and I know time is money. I, I know because I'm a city councillor, we don't get paid a lot, but I'm always on these type of calls and I'm doing my job out of the love that I have for the city of Springfield. And so I want to know, you love this project, how much of your own financial contribution monetarily have you contributed to this project monetarily?
Madam Chairperson, I would say that in order to get this project across the finish line, we as Opel and Wind Development have approximately 8.5 million dollars vested in this project. It's 17% of the construction budget. And that is comprised of the 3.5 million dollars of developer overhead and profit we will not get. It doesn't exist in the pro forma so that when we finance close, when we get this, so it's set with the banks and we have the proceeds to improve the building, that money will not materialize and will not be distributed among the partners.
So how much have you spent?
Additional to that, we have 1.5 million dollars of real time and consultants and legal costs and other specific costs associated with 1331 Elm. Over the 10 years that Wind Development's been involved and over the 15 years that Opel has been designated as preferred developer, that will not be reimbursed. Thus money spent that will not be recouped at finance closing, again unprecedented. In addition to that, we're gonna be investing 3.5 million dollars of cash. So that altogether, when you put those numbers together, it's 8.5 million dollars. Now, I say this with a tremendous amount of respect, I'm a Chicago kid, downtown Springfield to me was, might as well have been downtown Boston, it was the city to be in, it was where I wanted to be. We're vested in this because of what Peter mentioned, a real care and consideration. It's a civic project for us, the economics have been squeezed out of the project for everybody. Now it's about bringing this building back to life and creating something that we're all proud of. But when you look at what would be a typical development project for Opel or Wind, those economics would include a developer fee, which is for developer overhead and profit, and would reimburse us for all our expenses for the pre-development process. None of that's gonna take place here and we're still willing to commit 3.5 million dollars of additional resources to be a partner in its success. I think that says a lot and, and I say this with great affection. After 10 years on this project, eight years myself personally, Peter and his family for 30 years, there's no line behind us that says if these guys fall out, we're gonna jump in on that because it's so lucrative and is something wildly fantastic for our portfolio. You, you would see that being a reality. These are, this is a specialized project that's brought together a special team, including the city of Worcester, I mean, city of Springfield and the city council to get this done. And, and for that, I, I say thank you that we're at this point, but we have to get it to a point where it's actually a go.
So I don't doubt that you guys are committed to this project at all. Like, that is not the question, the question is, should the taxpayers' dollar, 6.5 million, be contributed to this project as well? And you are so invested, but yet if you don't get the 6.5 million dollars from the city of Springfield, you're ready to walk away tomorrow. And over for 30 years of work and legacy, I don't understand why you will walk away because it's not 13 million and I'm gonna tell you why. I contacted Mass Housing, I contacted Mass Housing personally to see what, what bucket of money are they getting the 14 million from and this 6.5 million dollars from? It's called the Workforce Housing Grant, where the money is coming from. And the whole 21 million is coming out of this bucket. And so when I talked to Nancy, and she is the Government Relations Director for Mass Housing, I said, is there a requirement, is it, is it required that the city match this 6.5 million dollars? And she said, no, because if that was in the requirement, you would have to match the whole 21 million because it came out of the same pot of money. I said, can you double check it for me? She went to the VP, the one who oversees this bucket of money and double checked it for me, double checked it for me, I said, I want to make sure 100% that the city is not required to do this match. She said, no, I triple checked, I said, can you check one more time? I asked her for it in writing, I said, can you put it in writing for me? She said, here's how it happened. The developers said that their expenses have increased because of COVID, material prices are going up. That is true, that is 100% true. They needed an additional 13 million dollars to get this project done. I said, okay, that's understandable, you know, I, I, I think that's true. And I said, and she said, what, we're invested in this project too, we think is a great project. I said, I think it's a great project. And she said, so we said out of the 13 million, we can give you half and then you will come up with the other half. You would come up with the other half and it doesn't have to be city funds. And so when we first started talking about this, we were told that their 6.5 million is contingent on the city giving 6.5 million dollars and that was a lie. That was not true.
Madam, madam.
No, I'm gonna finish. That is not true. She, they did not know, I'm going to finish and please don't interrupt me. I'm going to finish with what I was told and then I will let you speak, sir. I let you speak for a long time, now I'm gonna, I'm gonna say my piece. So when you guys came to us and we can go back to the recordings, everything is recorded. It was in the Republican newspaper that this project will fail, this project will not work because you will lose 6.5 million dollars if we didn't come up with 6.5 million dollars from the city. That is what we was told, it was written, it's in the paper, we can go back and I'm disappointed in the paper for not doing their homework and then putting that I was tired, so I didn't finish the meeting. I was tired, I worked from seven until 10 o'clock and folks wanted me to stay online for an additional two hours. It wasn't personal, that wasn't personal, that was Tracy Whitfield has a life and was tired, okay? That wasn't personal, but we could still come together and talk about these things. But what I don't like is not getting the full story and not getting the truth. It's not from you guys, Michael, from the administration, from the administration, because that was written from the administration, not you, I'm not blaming you, I'm not blaming Mr Pignelli. I do think that you care about this project, you worked on it for a very, very long time. But we are going to tell the truth and I do my research. And I don't like the wool being pulled over my eyes from anybody, okay? Not, hold on, not, and I have union folks calling me all day for the week. Oh, what are you gonna do? Are you gonna support this project? We don't want to lose our jobs? I don't want the union folks to lose their jobs, I don't. But if you're so invested in this, over 6.5 million dollars, you will pull the rug. It wouldn't be us, it's not the city council, you will pull the rug. Can we negotiate? Can we give you half of that and half go to the residents of the city of Springfield? Can we do this in the form of a loan? Like, what are the options that is going to benefit the rest of the residents of the city of Springfield? These are my concerns and these are my problems. I like to be told the truth, okay? That's what I like and we were not told the truth.
Madam, madam chairperson, from, from my vantage point and from my knowledge, you were told the truth. The delta between what we have for available dollars to do the project and what the real costs are now based on COVID and accelerated and stratospheric inflation related cost increases is 13 million dollars. As I wrote in my memo, we went to additional potential sources to seek out those additional funds. And that was not successful. We got to a point, we had to make a decision, is this project going to proceed? And who are the partners? The Commonwealth and Mass Housing were very clear in any conversation that I was part of that we will, being they will, I can't, can only quote the conversation, I can't quote them. We will come up with 6.5 million dollars if the city will match that 6.5 million dollars. Those were conversations, those were conversations I was privy to. I do, I did not talk to the woman that you spoke to in government relations at Mass Housing. I wasn't privy to that conversation, but I know from my personal participation that it, it came down to, is this project gonna proceed or not? The Commonwealth said, we will come forward with additional 6.5 million dollars. That's the Commonwealth working in tandem with Mass Housing to generate those dollars. But they.
Let me, let me do something.
They needed to see, they needed to see 6.5 million dollars from the city, otherwise it wouldn't proceed.
We heard this, but I'm gonna pull up a screen with the email and I want, and I'm gonna read it for you.
I don't know Nancy from Mass Housing, she was, she wasn't part of any conversation.
Dear councillor Whitfield, I was happy to speak with you by phone today and I write to clarify the specifics of our conversation because I asked for it three times. Mass Housing recently communicated with the sponsor of the Elm Street Project Wind Company regarding a request that the sponsor had made to Mass Housing for additional resources to help close the project funding gap of 13 million. It is my understanding that Mass Housing was told that the city of Springfield, Mass Housing was told that the city of Springfield was interested in providing additional funding for this project. Accordingly, Mass Housing committed to an additional 6.5 million with the expectation that the borrowers would secure the additional funds from the city to close the funding gap. Mass Housing intends to continue its participation in the project regardless of the source of additional funding that is necessary to close the gap. I hope this information is helpful to you. Please feel free to call me or email me with any additional questions. So first, Mass Housing was told that the city of Springfield, again, was interested in providing this additional funding, yet no one talked to the council about it. No one talked to the council about it. I'm gonna stop sharing this because I like to get my information in writing because I like the truth to be told, okay, sir?
I think, I think that memo is saying this.
What you were told, I wasn't there.
Same thing.
I don't, I don't see it in writing, but it said.
Same thing.
It said the city of Springfield was interested in doing this before they even had a conversation with the council. And you guys could have talked to the council way back when you knew you had this gap in January, but that didn't happen. It just appeared on our agenda, sir. And I want to give my colleagues the opportunity to ask questions here, sir. And so this is what my frustration is. And like I said, it's not with you, it's with the city of Springfield because they already were looking for ways to fund this project. They tried to do it probably through the Build Back Better Springfield program, which, which miraculously funds the exact project that you're working on. Adaptive reuse, half of the cost of the rehab, half of the cost of the acquisition. Maybe that's the reason that the program was created, I don't know. But I want to give my colleagues the opportunity to speak here because you and I have monopolized a lot of this conversation. And so does any of my colleagues have any? And so does any of my colleagues have any questions? Many counselors. If not, we could keep going. Counselor Govan.
Hi, um, thank you so much for letting me speak. So I actually do have some questions um, about this. And I told, I'm in total agreement with you, Counselor Whitfield, regarding the um, the need for prop, for our taxpayers to get some relief somehow from somewhere. Um, and I I would love to see the trash fee um, eliminated, like we've been told that it might be for the last few years. Um, but the one question that I had was, how much uh, in property taxes would the city get from this property once it's live? Do we know?
Madam Chairperson.
Do you have an answer for that, TJ?
I do not have an exact number because we're not exactly sure what the assessed value would be of the property once it's completed. Uh, I have to ask the Board of Assessors to give me a rough calculation, and my understanding is rough, it's around two hundred thousand dollars annually in tax revenue. But I can, don't quote me on that in the sense of when it's actually built and actually assessed based upon the the market at the time.
Okay, just an approximate is fine. So maybe two hundred thousand a year in property taxes. Um, and is there going to be affordable housing on here, or is it just all market rate?
Uh, through you, Madam Chairperson, to the counselor. Um, it, there's going to be fifteen units of workforce housing out of the total of seventy four units.
Okay, great, thank you. Um, and let's say you got above six point five million dollars. When did the project start and when would it be completed approximately?
Me- uh, through you, Madam Chairperson, to the counselor. Um, the project has started when uh, and Opal knew that we had to lock in the out of control costs. Uh, so we work with Fontaine, and uh, so right now, without a finance flow, so the project hasn't gone through the Mass Housing process and hasn't closed to give us the proceeds to use to fix the building up. We are spending uh, right now, somewhere in the neighborhood, three million dollars and expect to spend more until we close. So that's underway. That being said is, we expect that this project will be finished uh, in the late summer of twenty twenty-three. And that's a combination of uh, the complete historic adaptive reuse by a residential, the seventy-four units. And our hope is, fingers crossed, that includes all the retail space as well.
Thank you for that, um, so.
Counselor Govan, can I just, can I kind of comment further?
Sure.
Fontaine Brothers, who is the contractor?
Can you go through the chair, Mr. Pignelli? Please? Through the chair, that's fine, though. Go ahead.
All right. Fontaine Brothers, who are the, who are the contractors, the the GC on the project, local guys, right? They've determined that if we didn't start the project already with the three million dollars Mike talked about, that they'd have to go up for bid again, and because of further escalated costs for COVID, that the project would go up between five and nine million dollars more if we didn't start. So that's, that's why the project's begun with our funding because we wanted to stop even more escalation on the project.
Okay, great. Another, I'm sorry, I'm chair, chairwoman. So another question I had is, how many units? So you said fifteen out of the seventy-five would be affordable. Um, and what um, what AMI would it be?
Uh, through you, Madam Chairman, uh, to the counselor. Um, it's fifteen out of seventy-four units. And of those fifteen, they would be for AMI uh, between eighty and a hundred and twenty percent of Springfield area unit income.
Okay, great. Thank you very much. Um, I just did want to, again, reiterate that I I see this as two different things. If we're giving six point five million dollars to, you know, create some affordable housing to beautify this wonderful property that we have in our city, I think that we should, as a council, demand from the city and from TJ, whoever's in charge, that our residents get some relief in their property tax or their trash fee or something. I am in support of this uh, project. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Govan. Thank you. I do want to add that, before I move to on Counselor Fenton, that this project has secured, I'm gonna say fifty-seven point nine because of the six point five million dollars that um, the um, developers will get in addition from um, Mass Housing. Um, they, they have secured fifty-one, fifty-seven point nine million to develop this property. And so when you think about what has been raised from these different entities, which is MGM, Mass Mutual, um, the unions gave a little contribution, um, not a little, five hundred thousand is still a lot. Um, and then the tax credits, all taxpayer dollars um, out, outside of, well, union, union guys are are taxpayer dollars too, but um, all taxpayer dollars, that's mostly developed in this project. Um, I think that, I think that will equate to probably about less than six percent um, of the developers' own funding to um, go toward this um, development.
Madam Chairperson, just kind of for, for frame of reference, and I apologize, Counselor Fenton. Um, the reality is, is that the cost to do this project because of historic preservation and building condition, which is terrible, um, is the numbers that you described. In a, in Boston, if it were Boston, you'd be getting four to five dollars a square foot for those apartments. The vast majority of the costs would be able to be financed because you're able to charge rents at that level to be able to then get the banks to lend you money. TJ Plant uh, is incredibly talented as your chief financial officer. He he he's saying, he's got to have the Board of Assessors to look at this property. But when you look at comps in Springfield, the investment, which you've outlined the number of what will be the total that will go forward for this building, to bring it back to life because of its condition and and because of historic adaptive reuse, et cetera, and it 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 being wonderfully built by all union, is going to be probably forty million dollars than, more than the value of the building will be when it's complete, meaning when it's assessed by the city. It's just by the nature of how the real estate market is valued, both income and or asset wise, as it compares to other properties in the city of Springfield. So when you look at this as a pure, like, you talk about investments and equity, the reason why government is involved, the reason why wonderful partners like Mass Mutual is involved and MGM, and you've got the Commonwealth at the table, and you've got the developers at the table, and tax credits and all, is because of the reality of what you've presented is that the building's value when it's complete might be twenty-five million, but it's gonna cost sixty-five million dollars to develop. It's a reversed market, and so you've got to bring broad, diverse partners to the table with various funding sources so there's a shared risk because if it were a pure investment, that's why it's taken thirty years to do this. Nobody's going to do it. It's, it it would mean putting up sixty million dollars of private equity only to have a building that's worth twenty-five million.
Well, you guys did a great job cobbling together the fifty-seven point nine million, so I I I do applaud you on that. Um, I'm not against this project. Let me say this, okay? I think this is a great project. What I don't appreciate is stories being fabricated and using six point five million of free cash of the residents of Springfield's tax money, and yet not looking at giving breaks. So it's, it's not about the project. I I think the project is great, but I think the city, the residents deserve a break as well. So I just wanted to say that. Um, Counselor Fenton.
I swear, I swear in a Bible that there's been no stories that have been fabricated.
No, no. I'm, I'm, I just, I just read the email. I'm gonna meet you, sir. Um, Counselor Fenton.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Um, I just wanted to say that I believe very much in this project. I think that in a lot of ways, uh, this project has been the uh, golden goose of economic development in Springfield that's evaded us for uh, decades, for my lifetime, really. And um, I'd like to thank uh, Mr. Pignelli and the Pignelli family, Mr. Crowley, uh, Mr. O'Brien, and the union partners, as well as all the other funders, including Mass Mutual and MGM, um, who've collaborated to make this uh, make this development possible because without that uh, selfless commitment to this project, uh, we wouldn't be in a position to have these difficult conversations about funding. And um, I want to acknowledge that uh, this is a significant uh, expenditure of taxpayer dollars, and uh, it's begrudgingly that I support that expenditure. It is not begrudgingly that I support this project and the fine men and women who have helped to put it together. And um, I want to just uh, thank them on behalf of myself and on behalf of my constituents in the city um, for acting in a way that uh, from my perspective, has been uh, professional and has been with uh, the best interests of the downtown and proceeding with this development throughout. And um, I think that you deserve that thanks and accolades and respect. And uh, I didn't want to let, to let the moment go without acknowledging those efforts. So thank you very much, and um, for able to get this one done. Peter, I know that uh, your dad will be up there somewhere smiling uh, very broadly uh, when we, when we open this place up. So thank you.
Yeah, I'm happy for that. Thank you, Counselor Fenton. I just want to ask you a question about the sixteen million that we got from MGM. How come that is being contributed to this project? Counselor Fenton, because you've been there from the beginning.
Why is the sixteen million being contributed? The sixteen mil- million, as I said at the last meeting, Madam Chair, is being contributed pursuant to the commitment of MGM to invest in market rate housing as part of its uh, host community agreement.
As far as this host community agreement, because they were supposed to develop the school department building on State Street, which they decided not to, that now um, another developer has, and so they gave the sixteen million to this project because they weren't able to fulfill that project. Is that accurate?
Uh, misleading, accurate but misleading, I will say. Um, the, the city and uh, myself included, asked MGM to forego that development and instead invest the money that it would have spent in the housing here at Court Square because it was a much more consequential and difficult project to fund. Um, the council voted unanimously, yourself included, Madam Chair, to approve that amendment to the host community agreement to allow for that accommodation to be made. And after an analysis was conducted to determine what the value would have been uh, for MGM to construct those units, it was determined initially that that value would be somewhere in the range of eleven to twelve million dollars. Um, so it was only after additional concessions were made by MGM that we got that number up to sixteen.
Okay, well, it's accurate, not meaning to be misleading, but I want to get all the details out, out there because I didn't know that you um, worked on um, changing the structure of that amendment. Um, I didn't recall hearing that back then, so thank you for clarifying that information. Um, and while I think that Mr. Pignelli's um, dad would definitely be happy, there's taxpayers in the city of Springfield that's losing their homes to receivership and because they can't pay their property tax um, that won't be so happy i- if the city doesn't do something for them. And so while the wealthy will still be happy and in whatever arrangement works out, we have to think about those that um, are losing their homes and the ones that I hear from on a daily basis. Um, Counselor Allen.
Uh, thanks, Madam Chair. Uh, I want to do three things here. One is, uh, just underscore what Counselor Fenton said. I agree with him on his uh, commentary and compliments to the project team. Appreciate that and appreciate all of you working on it. My second thing is, I'd like to go back to TJ and just ask, and and then uh, ask about the property taxes again. TJ, um, is there any more you can say about the ultimate property taxes we'll get off this building?
Uh, counsel, yeah, so uh, no, Mike actually, uh, well, yeah, we're gonna look at it as, as uh, my, my, Michael Bryan said, they're putting a lot of money, more than the value will ever be on the square footage cost based upon what's gonna be billed. But my key point to this is, uh, Counselor Whitfield, we've heard you that you're looking for property tax relief. You've said it during the budget phase. Uh, we've put two and a half million last year, two and a half million again next year. The mayor has tasked me to look at other areas of property tax relief uh, for the residents and other potential ideas. I am working on all that as we speak. The issue we have is, we do not want to link this project, this vote, to property taxes. Property taxes is something that we're very keenly aware of what you're looking for and what the council's looking for and what the residents are looking for, but we're not linking to this vote. So stay tuned, and we will have more information coming as we get ready to release our budget and uh, have that conversation. But I don't want to mix the two up as you like to mix them up. I want to make it so, I know it's a lot of money, the six and a half million is a lot of money. Uh, I know you feel that the administration lied, that is completely untrue. The email says we've committed, whether it says we'll uh, commit or we went to them or they went to us. The bottom line was, we were at the finish line or at the goal line, and we needed to punch it through.
TJ, I didn't ask you.
No, let me finish.
I'm not gonna let you finish.
Oh, wait, you want to let me?
I'm going to, I'm going to, I'm going to address what you said. We are not linking this project to um, property tax. What we're linking is free cash because I asked for free cash for property tax, and you asked, and you asked for free cash for this project. So the topics that we are linking is free cash, not property tax because we also asked for trash free relief. We also asked to form this in the form of a loan. It's free cash that we're linking, and the request came from both. In addition, I'm going to comment on what you said about not lying. And see, here is where the lie is. Not that you guys didn't commit, because I'm pretty sure that you did commit without consulting at all with the city council. What was the lie was, you said, or maybe not you, but in the memo it said, or even, let's, let's pull up the Mass Live article, I can find it for you right now. It said that if the six point five million dollars is not approved, then you won't get the additional six point five million dollars from the state in Mass Housing, which is totally not true. They are committed whether this money comes from the city of Springfield or not. So if there was a different investor that would put up six point five million dollars other than the city of Springfield, the, these um, Mass Housing would still commit their six point five million dollars. So let's, hold on, let's not.
That is what we're saying, that is what we're saying, Counselor.
So let's not.
It's a half million. There was no angel investor coming in beyond what uh.
Okay, I understand that, but I'm, I want you to tell the truth. I want you to tell the truth.
There was no misleading in that at all.
It was misleading that you would lose six point five million dollars from Mass Housing if you didn't get this approved from the city of Springfield. You will not lose that.
Six and a half million, it didn't matter where it came from.
Exactly, and that's not what it said.
The city stepped up because there's no other investors out there willing to throw money into a project.
Well, that's what you should have said, but that's not what you did say. We were told that you would lose the six point five million dollars, which is not true. Mass Housing said they are a hundred percent invested in this development.
They need to have the six and a half million.
Sorry, Counselor Allen, to proceed, please.
Uh, thank, thanks, Madam Chair. Uh, my other question was about uh, the, you know, on the ground, building this out. Um, I didn't see Dave Fontaine on the call, but Michael, I'll just direct this to you, Michael O'Brien. Maybe you can get the right people to talk about it. Just interested in the number of unions, number of workers, the number of employees. I've been on the REO, uh, Responsible Employment uh, Committee uh, for years. I see a couple of people on this call that are also serve on that or attend those meetings. And I'm interested in the on the ground, uh, you know, high level, on the ground impact of people being employed, et cetera, and that sort of thing. And I, and how ready are we to go with that?
Uh, through the chairperson, uh, to the counselor, uh, ready to go. Uh, to the credit of Fontaine, who are incredible community partner, again, as part of a community endeavor at thirteen thirty-one Elm. Uh, you can expect over four hundred union-only workers uh, on this site throughout the project. Um, approximately fifty percent of that workforce is going to be uh, minority and women. Uh, and uh, when you look at the list, and I presented that list uh, to uh, the uh, mayor as well as to the executive director of the Springfield Redevelopment Authority, they have subsequently forwarded that to council. Uh, there is a list of local minority-owned, veteran-owned, and women business-owned um, companies that are going to be part and parcel of this project throughout. Talented local uh, business owners that are going to benefit from the work as well as uh, the dollars invested in in thirteen thirty-one Elm. Uh, and uh, Fontaine are proud uh, local owners. Uh, and that was the reason why, one of the great reasons why, beyond reputation and and price and all, that we work with them because we knew how important uh, local participation was going to be in this project. And we're, we're excited to. And we're, we're excited to, really our first project with the Fontaine Brothers, but there'll be many more to follow. Good people.
Uh, thank you. Uh, I've been on the council with this thirteen years. This is a great project. I plan to support it. And uh, I'm happy that so many local people will be employed. As long as we get the, the votes tomorrow, hopefully we'll have the votes to support it. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Counselor Allen, Counselor Hurst? You're muted, sir.
In a while. Um, thank you, Madam Chair. Uh, I'll first start off by saying, I can understand why emotions are high. You know, uh, we as a council wanted to see a number of things happen. Uh, we didn't want to get this put before us at the last minute, um, especially when you're talking about a significant amount of money. And especially when we now know that folks were looking at this for a while. Uh, we're looking at trying to make up this, this funding gap for a long time. Uh, it's also a struggle uh, to swallow, um, because it's not like the price of goods rose yesterday. They've been rising for the last three to four years. We should have known, and I'd imagine any savvy investor would have known, that um, that prices were going up and they were all only going to continue to go up the longer we wait. Uh, on top of that, I think folks need to understand where it is that we're coming from. I haven't heard from a lot of citizens. Uh, actually, I haven't heard from any um, who want to see us continue to invest millions of dollars in downtown. Um, certainly not above and beyond what we've already invested. And so, you know, it's unfortunate, but this particular ask comes on the heels of two million dollars that was already spent using ARPA funds. That was the first purchase for the city of Springfield, using funds that were devoted towards individuals who are struggling. Probably the same individuals who would reap the benefit of this six point five million. Uh, you know, and, and that's, and then now you're asking us to put in six point five million in addition to the four million that we already put in when we thought the deal was done. Uh, I thought it was done and I thought the project was an amazing project then. Uh, I think it would be a great project now. I just think the ask is entirely too high, uh, especially considering everything that your average tax-paying citizen is going through right now. They don't have anybody that's going to come to their rescue if they can't put food on the table because of inflation. They don't have anybody that can come to their rescue if they can't put gas in their car to go to work because the prices are too high. Um, they don't have the luxury of saying, you know what? City of Springfield, if you don't help me, we're pulling out. It just don't have it. And so, when we see things and things like this come before the city council, we have an obligation to represent their interest and to be an advocate for them and also support six point five million going to individuals who don't have to worry if the homework looks good, son. Give me one second. Um. Please, sorry. Um, it's the life of kids. Um, so they, they don't have the luxury of um, you know, of, of, of having folks that will come to their rescue. And so, um, you know, I, this is difficult for me. Uh, this is difficult for me because um, people are hurting. And um, without any sort of contingency plan from the city of Springfield, saying that you are willing to do this for them. It's, it's hard for me to justify this to them. It's just hard. So, we've got a few developers, none of which are from Springfield, all of which are doing pretty well for themselves. And then we have a hundred and fifty thousand residents, fifty-five thousand residents that are struggling, none of whom see any benefit to them out of supporting this project. They just don't. They don't see it and I can't blame them. When you're struggling to eat, it's hard to explain giving six point five million to a developer. So, I mean, my thought process is that, and I, and I'm not trusting that uh, you know, the city's going to do something later. I, I've, I've heard that before. I've heard it. I want you to tell me what it is you're going to do for them now, and I want you to put it out there publicly. And, and maybe you have the votes, TJ and Tim, so it doesn't matter. Uh, but you darn sure owe them an explanation because uh, this, this, this just isn't palatable um, to them. And then just lastly, Madam Chair, and you know, I'll get back to homework. Uh.
Like, we, you, we're losing you, sir. We're losing you. Can't hear you.
I, I said I, can you hear me now?
Yes, sir.
I said I did felt, feel lied to. Um, I did. I look at Union News Story, says that the state has pledged to provide the other six point five million dollars, provided the city comes through. Says, only way in which we're going to provide this funding is if the city matches it. The editorial that came out, same thing. And so, you know, I just, I just think it put us in a really bad position. Um, because, and I'm, I, listen, maybe this is just what I felt. Maybe that's not what the intentions were, but that's, that's just how I felt. And so, now somehow the city council is rep- is responsible for this project moving forward or not. Um, and I, in my opinion, there's a whole lot of blame to go around if this project doesn't move forward. So, with that said, Madam Chair, I'll, I'll give the floor back to you. Uh, I appreciate your efforts. I appreciate your research. I appreciate the fact that, you know, you certainly have had, um, you've dedicated yourself to really investigating what it is uh, that um, that was actually being put forward and educating us on that and certainly the citizens of Springfield. So, um, thank you.
Madam Chairperson, Madam Chairperson, if I could just for a second.
One, one moment, sir.
If I could just for a second, I, I, I would state under penalties of perjury in a courtroom that I have been in conversations that were very clear that this funding source from the Commonwealth had to be matched by the city. And that's the conversations that I was, was in. And that was because we had to get the project underway and if we didn't, it would never happen. And that's where it came down to. It was at that.
Sir, I don't think you're lying, sir. But if it came down to court, would they believe your word or the email that I just showed? I mean, what, what, what would have more weight? So, I, I don't think.
I would say, I would say my word because that, that is, that, that press release is erroneous. It's erroneous. It does not have any bearing.
I'm talking about the email from mass housing.
That email has no bearing. It's uninformed.
Came from mass housing staff and you're, so it's your word against her email and writing, sir. I said, I don't think, I said, I don't think you're lying, sir.
I'll stand by my word.
Okay, you stand by your word. I said, I don't think you're lying. I don't think you're lying. I think that you gave the information as you heard it and as you saw it. However, I think it's the city of Springfield's responsibility and mine as a physical is a, as a, is my fiduciary responsibility to do my due diligence, to find out the truth of what's going on when we're spending the city of Springfield taxpayers' money. And that is what I'm going to do. So, whether your word or this email is the truth, who knows? I'm going to go with what's in writing myself, sir. I'm not calling you a liar. I'm saying the city of Springfield is their responsibility to let us know what the facts are. And maybe they didn't do their due diligence like I did mine. I went to the source, the vice president and asked for it in writing, sir. I'm not saying that you're lying, okay? I'm not saying that you're lying. I'm telling you what I found out. Okay? So, you don't have to say that again. You said it three times. I don't think that you're lying about what you heard or what your understanding is, okay? Can we agree on that?
Yes, Madam Chairperson.
Thank you. Uh, Counselor Fenton?
Uh, thank you, Madam Chair. Um, just on, on this specific issue about the six and a half for mass housing being tied to some appropriation from the city. Um, the way that I'm looking at this issue is that my understanding is that mass housing doesn't approve appropriations or funding unless there's a balanced budget and a pro forma that shows that there's enough money to get the project done. So, if mass housing says, we'll give another six point five, that six point five isn't going to go anywhere if the developer can't show that there's a balanced budget. And when the other six point five that needs to come in to balance the budget uh, is a component of that, it, in my mind's eye, is tied together. It's not, it's not mass housing saying Springfield has to pay six point five before we pay six point five. It's mass housing saying, we won't give you six point five unless you have a balanced budget. And the developer says, well, we don't. We have the six point five gap and the only place that we can make up those funds is Springfield. And so, um, that's my perspective on the subject. That's why I don't personally feel misled about the way that it was represented. And um, that's just my two cents on the subject.
Thanks, Council Fenton, Fenton, for your um, perspective. Definitely appreciate it. Um, I was just going by my understanding and um, it was told to us that the six point five was contingent on getting it from, from the city of Springfield. Now, had they said, we could have pulled together the money from anywhere, however, we tried and we couldn't. And then um, we had to, we, it, it wasn't proposed like that. It was proposed that it had to be a city match because I specifically asked, does it have to be a city match or can the match come from anywhere? And what she told me was it doesn't have to be a city match. So, I understand that they couldn't get it from anywhere else, but it should have just been said like that. It shouldn't have been proposed like, if we don't get this money from the city of Springfield, from the city of Springfield, then we're going to lose that six point five million. And you're right, she did say they have to have their full uh, financial package together. So, you are accurate when, when you say that and, and, and your understanding of that. So, thank you for your um, perspective on that, um, Counselor. Counselor Hurst?
I was just going to say it's an important distinction, uh, because folks are looking at the city council like we're the ones that made, that, that might potentially make the project fall through uh, because we're not coming up with six point five million. And I, I would argue, no. It's, it's the developers who can't find the six point five million, uh, not the city of Springfield. Um, and you know, and to that extent, I guess I have two questions. Um, TJ, why can't we, why can't this money be loaned?
I was wondering.
What was?
Sorry, you okay?
What's the problem with that?
So, well, I guess if I butcher this, Mike, uh, correct me if I'm wrong. So, what this actually is, is it's six and a half million dollars going into the total project to be part of a loan. Uh, the way the loan works is that um, it gets paid back if the project is successful. But if by the time it gets to the city of Springfield to get paid back, the money will be, they will not have made enough revenue in order to be able to pay the overall project back. So, that's how Tom Moore described it to me, saying, look, it's, it's technically a loan. It's technically going into a fund to be a loan, uh, but we would, we're not the ones that do it, doing the one that's mass housing financing. And that to pay back, whether it's the mass mutual, payback, uh, mass housing, it's by the time it gets to Springfield, uh, unless somehow they make a, a, a fortune on this property project, which we all know is, isn't the case and it isn't why we're doing this. Um, Mike, I don't know if I misconstrued any of that as to why this isn't a loan uh, directly to the project from the city other than that. I don't know if I missed anything.
The uh, if I could through you, Madam Chairperson, or to you, Madam Chairperson, uh, i- i- following up on TJ Plant's uh, accurate presentation. Uh, all of these funds are, are going to be bundled by mass housing. Mass housing is going to be the overall lender on the project of both public and private funds, mass mutual MGM. And those uh, would be uh, all managed by m- mass housing to the, the state's largest lender uh, with all the structures of a mortgage uh, to the project partners. And as I identified i- in my memo to the council, uh, approximately forty-eight point five million dollars of what will be uh, loaned, permanent loan to us uh, for a project that'll be valued locally at about twenty-five million. Um, and uh, city of Springfield's funds are part of that bundling by mass housing. Uh, mass housing will be responsible for managing that mortgage, for overseeing our operations there annually for us submitting audits and ultimately um, participating in the CAC flow over the period of the mortgage um, at, at twenty-five percent.
Why, why do you keep saying the value is going to be twenty-five million? Why is that your um, guesstimate number?
In the end, it'll be your board of assessors. It'll be the talented people within city government. That's my number based on our research, based on comp, based on income, what the property produces for income. There are two methods, uh, assets and then income that your assessor will use. That's our number. Again, we, we look forward to the city's analysis. Uh, we just do our own review like that because the bank, in this case, mass housing, will also do that. There's a lot of review about the value of the asset when done for loan to value and, and other calculations and development.
So, that, that's just your guesstimate of the value?
That, that, that's my current estimate. Yeah, I know, but it's based on decades of experience at Wynn.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Counselor Hurst?
Uh, my other question is um, is if for some reason this doesn't go through um, TJ, uh, I'd imagine that MGM is still on the up to build those market rate apartments, correct?
That actually is probably a better question left for the law department. I would imagine that would be the case. Uh, it would, they would still have to build the units that are committed to the host community agreement.
Got it.
So.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, um, Counselor Hurst. Um, so, I just wanted to reiterate, especially for the union workers, that this is not the city council pulling the rug from under your um, your union work project. This, I just want the information to be out there and I wanted to, to be clear that the six point five million at mass housing is not contingent upon um, approval of six point five million from the city of Springfield. I understand why they came to the city of Springfield because they couldn't put together the um, the investments, um, resources from any other avenue. And so, they worked with the city of Springfield to um, make this happen. So, I understand those things. What was um, very disappointing and disturbing to me is that um, we got the information last minute and we didn't have the entire truth about the money being contingent. And I know Mr. O'Brien don't agree with that. However, I had the conversation and any single one of you can call uh, mass housing and ask the same questions that I asked and see if the answer would change or if it would be different. Um, it's not contingent. They are very invested. It's not contingent. They are very invested. They think this project is equally as important as all of us counselors do. We all think it's an important project. I'm just asking the city of Springfield to do better, to do better by the residents of the city of Springfield, to ensure that while great projects like this get done, that the residents are also taken care of. It's not either or. It's in addition to. We can't just look at the wealthy keep getting richer or making sure the projects downtown gets developed because we have projects throughout this city that needs help and that needs investments that can put all you union workers to work. And so we need to start looking outside developing downtown. Although we know that's the hub and that's how the economic grows. We still need to look at other avenues outside of downtown and grow our economy that way. And so I wanted to put the true information out here on the table. I think this is a fantastic project. I think that the Pignelli family has worked hard on this project for a lot of years and I don't really want to see it fails, but as Counselor Hurst said, the city needs to come to the table and say what they're going to do for the residents of the city of Springfield in addition to giving the 6.5 million to the developers to develop this project. We need to do more for our residents, our taxpayers, our constituents, the people that vote us in. That should be our number one priority. And I know by building economic development that helps, but when folks aren't eating, when their houses are getting taken because of property tax, where is their relief? We got another additional $16 million of free cash that we could do more with. We got that. How are we going to put that to use for the residents of the city of Springfield? It can't just keep going to developers time and time and time again. So with that, I'm going to conclude the meeting. I appreciate everyone's time. Thank everyone for the great work. Thank the union workers for the hard work that you've been doing out there to make this development successful. Thank you to the developers for your vision with this project and we'll continue to work with the city of Springfield to see what we can do for the residents of the city of Springfield. And I don't want you all to go and think this was a slight to the project. You guys have been working hard. I met Mr. O'Brien probably like three or four years ago. The project is a great project. Thank you to the union workers. Thank you to everyone that's involved. Thank you to all the funders, like Counselor Fenton said. It's great that they put up this type of funding to get this project done. And so with that, I will conclude the meeting if there's no more questions from counselors. Okay, thank you. And we'll see you all tomorrow to vote on this item.